I'll call the board of March 9th, meeting of the planning board here at Winklevoss. And I'll be with the roll call.
Recording in progress.
Me, Michael York.
Here.
Jane Johnson.
Here.
Michael Day. Your friend himself.
Here.
Richard Lane.
Here.
Selectman, represent, Slade Karadzinski.
Here.
Steve Malone, open it. Brian Vertigell, open it.
Here.
And Victoria Haim, open it.
Here.
I will see Victoria for Michael. Michael Day, please. Okay, so, the agenda this evening is, applications for public hearings, planning board number 23-009. That's a multi-tenant application, Donna Arsenal requests to operate a gift shop, existing, existing multi-tenant commercial property owned by Richard Pratt, located at 919 West Swansea Road. Excepted property is shown at tax map 71, lot 11, in the business district. And under discussions and other business, we have SMC site plan modifications, preliminary conceptual consultation, Greg Johnson about mixed restaurant property, and he has asked that to be moved to the March 23rd meeting, rules of procedure amendments, adoption hopefully, site plan, the regulations, and any other business that may be required. And first up would be reviewing and approving the minutes of February 23rd, 2023. Anybody have any changes or clarifications or additions to the minutes? I have just one thing, and that would be on page 8, it looks like, and we're talking about, from the very top of page 8, we're just talking about the square foot, the load of roof of the new addition to the recycling center. And I just want to clarify, it says, the chair said, the 65 pounds per square foot of weight, there is a cubic foot of water, and that's a concern. What it means to say is that cubic foot of water weighs about 65 pounds, and that would be just one cubic foot of water, and if you had more than one cubic foot of water, you would go above the, you don't have to dwell on it, but it would go above the weight of that, that rule, but that's all meant, was that one cubic foot of water weighs about 61. That's the only thing I had on the minutes, anybody else?
Just one other question, I want to clarify, going back on page 6, where Jane asked about the renting of campus, was that truly $100 a day, or per week, for that section?
I don't know, I would assume it was, well, I don't know, actually, I don't know if it was per day or per week, let me think of that.
Yeah, I'm also not sure, I would be surprised if it's per week, because the town provided a lifeguard, and it's more of a beyond the belt program that kind of takes out where the school system drops off, or outside of school daycare.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that we're, whether it's some problem.
Yes, we'll leave it at a minute at $100 a day. Okay, anybody else? And a motion to approve the minutes of the February 23rd meeting, as revised.
So moved.
Motion by Richard Lane to approve the minutes of the 23rd, for a second.
No, second.
And my brain itself, for discussion, and all those in favor, can you take a second?
Aye.
And that's out of the way. That brings us up to regional impact vote, is there anything on tonight's agenda that requires a regional impact, for us to notify around towns? If not, motion, then maybe we'll be in a vote. Motion by Victoria, that nothing on tonight's agenda required us to notify around towns, is there a second?
No second.
Seconded by Richard Lane, is there any further discussion? And all those in favor, can you take a second?
Aye.
And you're opposed? Okay, so, our first application up, a public hearing, and that's a multi-tenant application, Donna Arsenal, requests to operate a gift shop, existing, in the existing multi-tenant commercial property owned by Richard Pratt, located at 919 West Swansea Road. Excepted property is shown at tax map 71, lot 11, in the business.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I would be recusing myself from this case, simply because I received a call from the property owner, and a discussion ensued, without the rest of the board being privy to it, so I will recuse myself on those grounds.
Okay, anybody have an objection to that? If not, then I will see Brian Vertigell or Michael York, for this matter. And I will open up the public hearing, is, are you Donna Arsenal?
Yes.
So, anything to add here, it looks like a pretty straightforward application there.
It is, I currently have, I was here a little less than a few years ago, and was here for my home business, however, the traffic that goes by my house is like, versus moving to this location, it's like 15,000 cars, that was a few years ago, but, you know, still a few more, so just going to get me back into the building.
Okay. And it's like, see, being unit number three.
Yes.
Be six days a week, 10 to four, and one employee, that would be you?
Me.
Okay, estimated customers, 10 to 20 per day, parking space is planned, they have plenty of parking there, UPS and FedEx, one to two per month deliveries, outside lining is existing, no special licenses are permitted required that I'm aware of.
You know, so I am currently approved by the town to have my business, and also in good standing with the state, and I am, I believe, I have my, I'm legal all the way out.
You're in good standing with the board too, then I guess. So, anybody have any questions for, yeah, for that on this note? If not, I'm, any members of the public here for this, other than you? I guess not, so I'm going to close the public hearing. And again, pretty straightforward, no reply, and everybody knows who's going, who's ten there, long ago in there. And they, nobody has any other questions or discussion about it? But they will entertain a motion, Cooper?
I'd make a motion.
Just a second. Jane.
Well, I just, I think we all would agree that those shops, we've already set up the rules for how things would be, business would be conducted there, so she knows that, and I know that, I think it's okay.
Yeah, okay.
I'll make a motion that we approve our application.
Motion by Brandon Self to approve the multi-tenant application, is there a second?
I will.
Seconded by Jane Johnson, is there any further discussion? And all those in favor, can you take a second?
Aye.
Aye, all those both, okay, and that's done, and I will re-see Michael York, and come to Brian Vertigell.
That means that I'm first, right, can I also ask a couple questions now, because I paid less than two years ago to have a business approved, and I was approved, and I paid the fees and everything that came with it, and I don't, I'm certainly not here to, you know, appreciate all of you, however, I paid my fees again this time, but I received two certified letters, one of them came to my house, and one of them I had to pick up at the post office in Keene, because it wasn't available here in Swansea, and it was a second notice in regard for this, and I want to know, out of the seven certified letters that I sent out, did I pay for myself to get two? Because it seemed odd to me that I'm getting these certified letters, when I already know that's what's happening. Second, secondly, I take a lot of pride in my business, and I felt like, if eight months ago, I walked into the town hall, and I said, I'm entertaining purchasing Sally's books, and I was told, that's great, we're so proud of you for being, you know, doing what you're doing, and it's a one-for-one retail, there wouldn't be a board meeting, why am I here today to move to that location? And so I feel like, it's just, if I'm already approved, and I'm established, and I'm not a, like, a, a business that is new to the area, then why do I have to go through this process? Because opposed to say that in two years, I might want to grow even bigger, and I have to keep going and paying, so in two years, I paid over $200.
So.
In certified letters, my applicant, and I'm not a, listen, I pay my application fees, 25 bucks, but I have to do the teen sentinel, and certified letters, I get two certified letters, the Pratt's get a certified letter, who signed the application, knowing that I was going to move in? So it's just, you know, it kind of bothers me a little bit, that this is what I have to face, especially being a business, and I want people to know, I was recognized by a radio station in Keene, for doing good in Swansea and beyond, this past Christmas, because I do a huge Christmas event that's free, all philanthropy, for any town, or anybody who wants to show up, whether they're a different state or not, and I just felt like, this was convoluted, to have to come again.
Okay, so, it's all about location, you're changing your location of your business, correct? It's the same business as you were stating, but you changed the location, so, the reason that that has to be done all over again on the location, is that there's a different location, different circumstances, different abutters, and again, it's all about giving a butters a chance to view what's going on, on the property, abutting them, so, that's the reason for reapplying having another application, just because of the change in location. As far as the two certified letters, I don't know why you've got two, do you have two addresses or something?
No, I have both of them here, they were both sent to me on February 23rd. One came to my house, and one went to Keene, and the Keene one didn't even tell me what it was, I got a notice in my mailbox that said, I had this certified letter, but it didn't tell me who it was from, or anything, so when I went to this Swansea post office, they said, no, it's sitting in Keene, and when I went there, it was on the town of Swansea, which I have, whoops.
It was the same exact letter?
Uh, very similar, yeah.
It was similar, then it was a different letter, I guess.
Yeah, because if, there's one that said, here's your fees that you owe, and here's when the meeting is, and the other one was, here's, the public hearing is going to be on this day.
Okay, well.
The fees one, it should not have been a certified letter, that should have been a regular post.
I know, that was this one, right here.
I'm not sure why the post office made you pick it up like that, but it was not certified, that's just regular posts, and you're not charged for that.
So, did I have to pay for this one?
Yes, by statute, we have to send the applicant, the property owner, all the abutters, certified mail, and we, the town of Swansea, don't have any control over who receives those.
Right, no, and I, you know, and I understand that, I just think it's silly that I pay for myself, you know, and it, it just seems odd to me that that's what I did, so. You know, now that I, I'm nervous speaking anyway, because I'm an honest person, and I feel that I was honest to come to you and apply for this, however, you know, there's people on social media selling stuff in the town of Swansea, under a social media business name, and they've never had to come here, file taxes, or anything, and it's frustrating, it's frustrating, because I'm doing the right thing.
Well, I'm gonna, I hope we answered all your questions, do you have any others?
No, that would say, I just, you know, I don't make this.
Yeah, thank you, yeah, we appreciate the input, and, you know, it's something to be out of our control, like the certified letters, and the other thing, what is in zoning rules, decided to change location, you have to go through the process.
And I, and I would like, just personally, I would like the process reviewed, simply because if I was an abutter to a commercial property in state, every time somebody came in and out, because it's basically like a strip mall there, and I have a certified letter, I'd be frustrated getting all that, and I'm just speaking on behalf of people I don't even know, however, I just think that the process needs to be reviewed and looked at, because maybe there's a different way of doing it for existing businesses, I'm not offensive.
But on the agenda tonight, one of those, I invented, on our agenda tonight, is looking into that, a business that is primarily exactly the same, there's another one going out, looking into that, and that doesn't require public hearing, doesn't require a meeting, it's still, not a public hearing, we're looking into that.
Yeah, and I appreciate that, that you're looking into that, and that's it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Next item up on the agenda, this is under discussions and other business, SMC site plan modification, and this is for the, we have the, a few years ago, I think, but, I may as well, for some modifications there, for another demo. And you are up.
Thank you, John Newman with Hillstone Lane Consultants, here on behalf of SMC Swansea Limited Partnership, also here with me tonight is Robert Simons, who is with the SMC Swansea Limited Partnership. The site plan modification that we are here tonight to present is, in the front of the building, there's a parking island here, and the applicant's looking to provide some outdoor patio space, amenities for people that have apartments here, to have an outdoor space to hang out and, you know, enjoy the outdoors. So, we've taken the plantings that were on the original plan, kept all the landscaping counts the same, and we just moved them to, along the front here, and we moved the larger bits to the northern boundary right here. And then for, so landscape patio area, there's going to be a curb block, so we have a photo here, similar to what will be constructed, so, open roof space, it provides some shade or posts, not on solid roofs. And we have a diagram here, so there'll be curved seating walls, so these will be about 18 inches in height, and benches provided, and then two outdoor grills that will be propane fired, and then have for fire pit, that is propane fired, so, we located, was opted the utility plan, so, to show 500 gallon buried propane tank over on this landscape pile, so it'd be fed underground, and a water feature on the other, on the southern end of the landscape area, and then aluminum vents around it, like a, the.
Water feature, you need some.
It is coming.
Okay.
Yep. So, we specified on here, the fountain, the fencing, the outdoor grills, or the two outdoor grills, the fire pit, and the fire pit has safety features, so there's, there's shut-off valves, but there's also a 20-minute timer, so, if, if someone turns on the fire, walks by within 20 minutes, it turns off the gas. And these are used at other properties that SMC has already, so, they're very familiar with it, and these shut-off valves work very well, so, it's not let down, and then, and then some, you know, the benching, it's just aluminum benches, so, we've kept landscaping the same, and then hopefully, they improve for avenues.
Parking is same?
Parking is all same.
Aren't losing any spaces over there, I can, no point, I can see.
No, the pavement edges are exactly the same as what was on the current plan.
Footprint of that little.
Yeah, we just took the main parking.
I see. There, I'm not, much change there.
Yeah.
So, any questions from the board? So, does it look like this is a modification, can they approve it immediately, and they can come back for public hearing? Looks to me like it's pretty simple, straightforward, and should be able to be done at this meeting in five.
I would think so too, there's not really change in anything, wasn't already there.
Yeah, there are small improvements there, so.
Excuse me, what is the height of the fencing that's going to be going around?
Six, six foot.
It'll be a six foot?
Yeah.
That's a chain link, or?
No, it's, it's an aluminum square valve, it's going to be applied, aluminum fence.
Did you say it's gated?
Yeah, so there'd be a gate on this inner side right here, so you said, showing it, a double gate.
And that will be locked, basically, and how is the access?
I wouldn't think so.
No, it's not locked, just a latch.
Okay. Any other questions? And if not, a motion would be in order.
I'll make the motion that we approve as modifications.
Motion by Brandon Self to approve the modification, is there a second?
No, second.
Seconded by Michael York, regarding further discussion, and all those in favor, can you take a second?
Aye.
All of those opposed? And you're on, thank you very much, you're welcome.
Thank you, we'd like the process.
The only is going your way, right? Okay, so we're skipping the preliminary conceptual consultation, that's being moved to our, and that brings down the rules of procedure amendments, and everyone, I presume they got a copy of it, and read it through. Anybody have any comments on the rules of procedure? I think it was pretty well covered there, we, thanks a bunch for the, pretty good bunch of modifications to it.
I've been in, I think we've finished it. Anybody else? I think so too.
I have one, one question, one. For the complete application, number five, for public hearings, required acceptance of inclusion application.
Page 04, yeah.
Excuse me.
Yeah, page 04, right, yeah, it's number five on page 04, go ahead, I got you.
Please do not to, or, product of the airport, in our sequence of, of application, acceptance or non-acceptance, is there a way, that, once that's presented, that we, without violating too much, we can postpone the vote, to give ourselves more time? I know in this one, we were kind of boxed in, because we're running out of time.
Oh, at the end of it there?
Yeah.
Yeah.
When, when that was first given to us, after the zoning board approved, is there a way for us to, okay, it's presented to us, but not to have voted on it?
Yeah, when, to act on the application, whether to accept it or not, at the first stage that we get it.
Yeah, whether we can postpone, somehow postpone our action, to give us more time without.
I think we have, we have 30 days.
Yeah, we have 30 days, but I'm, that's from the time we say, okay, the application is complete.
If we say the application, application is complete, that starts the process of the 65-day clock, but we have 30 days to act on the application, once it's presented to us, so we don't have to, as long as we're in 30 days of acting one way or another, whether it's three or not.
Is there a way where they have another 30 days after that?
No, then it would start at a 65-day clock after that, unless it's 95 days.
Okay, but that's why, that, we would have allowed ourselves an additional.
Once we accept the application is complete, then that starts the whole process there, but if we, if we don't accept it as complete, if we table the matter to another meeting, and it's within that 30 days, kind of, we're within that 30 days, then, yeah, it could be delayed for another two weeks, probably, if we have it at one meeting. And I don't, do you know if it's for, if it's when the application is presented to you, at the land board, or whether it's presented to us, for the purpose of that?
I, it's me, but I'd have to, most of the, again, go with content in a manner, but it wasn't given to the, to the, right.
Land department, so it's 30 days after that, so we may not have, you know, depending on when, we may not have that extra time to postpone it to the next meeting, if it blows the 30-day deadline limit, so.
Could we, could we do an extra meeting, what would, are we required to stick to the two meetings a month?
We could do an extra meeting, you know, it's in our rules of procedure that we meet on specific days, but we can have special meetings and extra meetings if it's warranted, I don't know, just trying to delay an application is warranted.
Or, I think what, what you're saying is just trying to, it was a very big gnarly application, so trying to have time to really, you know, examine it and think about it.
It's just 65 days, you know, it seems short in one regard, but, you know, it's got to be fair to the applicant too, and the other.
Sure, but, but putting an extra meeting in would not slow it down, but it would give the board more deliberation time.
And, a special meeting can be called by three members of the board, for whatever purpose it is, and I suppose that would be done at a one.
But that doesn't, that doesn't give us any more time, it just, it just gives us another meeting within that time.
Certainly gives us more time to work on it, but no time, as far as that clock goes up.
I'm just trying to figure if there's a way that we can extend that, to give ourselves a little more time, especially when that, that really, that was kind of tough, and we really didn't have a chance, well, we got a chance, but we was, but.
It was a lot, that was a lot, that was a lot.
But are, are you talking about, like, to gather more information, to have, is?
Just to research it more.
Research it, yeah.
I could ask, and then, you guys do have the option to deny an application without prejudice, if you feel when 65 days are up, and you can't get an extension, if you do not have enough information for an approval, or a denial, you can deny it without prejudice, and then the applicant can resubmit the exact same application the following month, following week, the next day.
I would think if it's still fall underneath those rules, that it had to be a pretty good read, otherwise.
I think you're right.
Yeah, I think.
I mean, you, there would have to be.
You got the name, what we're missing.
Good, exactly.
And how long it's going to take to get it.
Yeah.
You don't have to be specific.
But outside appraisal, would have been a, a, except.
Except, but that's a question that's already answered by the Supreme Court, so, we couldn't revisit it.
That was answered by the zoning board, the Supreme Court had said nothing about the appraisal.
Oh, yeah, right, it was the zoning board, but still, it was already answered, and we can't overrule the zoning on that.
I don't believe. No, it hasn't answered in the ZDA, so, planning board can't go against those guys, unless, you know, the planning board can still ask for things like that during the process there, even though the applicant might not have to pay for it, because, you know, a lot of it is within getting applicant to pay for some of these studies and things that the planning board wants through there, if the planning board, you know, we'll say the zoning board or adjustment, goes through the whole process of the, you know, not being in, or, or, or the whole surrounding area, fitting in and that type of stuff, on the appraisals, the planning board still, in my opinion anyways, could ask for another appraisal, and the planning board paid for it.
Yes, that's in the, right.
And then, you know, and then go from there, if it had the exact opposite outcome as the first one did, then there's something to discuss.
Okay, so.
Even though the zoning board would have, you know, ruled on it, I would say, I might be wrong, but we'd have to have a determining way to know.
If, if what you're saying is, we could have refused it without prejudice, and it would have been, it would have perhaps given us time to sit outside, it'd been, I don't know, I'm going down a bit of a rabbit hole.
That whole, if we did, but if we did, you know, deny it without prejudice, so that means they could bring the same exact application to us, because if we deny an application, then they cannot bring the same exact one up on board, it has to be fairly different from the original, but if we denied it without prejudice, they could bring the same exact one up, but, what we're saying before is that, if we did that, we'd have to name specifically why we're doing that, and if it was for something like, you know, we're talking about the appraisal thing there, then the applicant still could go and appeal it and say, look, this is already decided at the EBA, these guys can't do that to us, you know, and they probably have won that.
Yeah, they probably would have done that too.
Well, I would if I were them, yeah, it's all, it's in business, that's how they're, you know, they're playing by the same rules we're playing by.
That's one of the core ideas.
Yeah, yeah, good to have a discussion like that, that's the worst we'll be doing, supposed to bring up questions, discuss like that. Anybody else on the rules of procedures? And if not, a motion to accept them, against, as, as, as.
I'm going to.
Not second as amended? Okay, a motion by Richard Lane to reject the rules of procedures as amended, is, and seconded by Brandon Self, is there any further discussion? All those in favor, can you take a second?
Aye.
All of those opposed? And you? We've finally gotten through that one.
So happy to meet you.
And it just so happens, Sarah brought a copy that we can all sign here.
Just in case you didn't, we've done it tonight, no further comment.
We don't have to, okay.
I think you might as well finish the game, because I'm sorry, but then it leaves more room for.
What's the last page you have in your, what's the last page you have in your pamphlet? So, I, I printed out the revised copy.
Oh, okay, so it's the same.
All that, we have on our.
The site plan review regulations on our agenda there. We've got quite a while and I think we might be able to get around to going over those at some point. Workshop meeting, probably best for something like that, because we get into some like discussions like that and review regulations. And it's just, is it an idea we can start discussing from tonight or if we can go back and read the site plan review regulations and take it section by section, how we want to do it. So we can decide whether we want to have a workshop meeting for that. And during that workshop meeting, we can decide if we want to look at, you know, have a, just a workshop meeting on, on going over some of the plans, you know, reading the, the plans and, and just what information that the engineers and stuff give us. I have a couple of sets of plans from Market Basket over there, which have been up there for a long time. So we don't have any problem with us going over the plans that we can use just for an example and just go over those plans and, and just be familiar with them. Because the more familiar we are with the plans, the better off we'll be with the applicant, you know, figuring out what they're talking about, asking for things like that.
What are your thoughts on having a joint meeting with ZBA sometime also?
Yeah, we do. What's the purpose of the meeting?
Just to get together once a year and discuss things and.
Yeah, yeah.
They might want to see how the replans do.
Also to understand where each, each board is coming from and what parole lives and how they interact with each other.
You could schedule that. Before town meeting or after town? Probably after town meeting, I guess. De-elections, that's next week. So you have to be after that. So yeah, we could schedule one of those as well. Prefer to have some workshops and get some stuff going and done and maybe meet with ZBA after that. They might be interested in some of our changes to our rules of procedure. I don't know, we're probably not familiar with them, but they might want to get familiar with it just to look over. So what shall we do? What's the next meeting we'll go, Sarah? How are we scheduled to?
At one point there should be a lot of time.
Oh, a timeline, okay.
There's one site plan review application. I mean, you know, I don't want to say.
Well, we can still schedule.
It's not going to be quick, but it's not going to be totally uphill.
Okay, well, let's schedule that for a workshop. And the workshop will be just generally going over site plan review regulations, deciding where we want to start and what we want to do. Maybe if we can all read it before that. And if anybody wants, I'll bring those set of plans there and we can start just looking over the, the plans, just getting the information on it, had it straight out of the room.
Do you want to look at any site plan review type of site? I mean, not any, any review rules.
Site plan, yeah, site plan regulations. I don't know, let's, I don't know when the last time anybody read them. So I think it'd be a good idea just everyone just read them for the next meeting, get familiar with them.
Will everyone just save the memo that was in this packet? For the multi-tenant process?
Oh, yes, okay. Oh, that, yeah, that's on there too, worded.
It's part of site plan review regulations because that's where that regulation lives.
Let's discuss that.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, let's do that. I'd forgotten that was in there. It's next to remind me. Here's our memo. That's on the last page of our, our agenda packet here. Yeah, we'll just want to explain that. So we have it, everyone would imagine read that and you know what the wording is, current wording, and, and the idea or the intent is to make it a little more streamlined for a new tenant application to come in and just go into a building where someone just before them was doing pretty much the same exact business there that we had earlier. Yeah, making it so they don't have to go through a public hearing, just a meeting with the planning board. And if the planning board decides they're in that meeting, well, there's a little more than that. So you'll have to have a public hearing then so be it. And it'd be done that way. Otherwise, just make it so we can approve it at one meeting. Don't have to make them through or go through the certified letter that that woman was talking about or any of that other stuff, etc. So the wording here, the, the old wording, I'll just read it through. The old wording, new tenant applications, businesses moving into a building that has previously received site plan approval for the same type of permitted use may be allowed without formal site plan review after public hearing before the planning board. The completed new tenant application and a butter list must be submitted to the land use office three weeks prior to the next regular scheduled meeting, land board meeting. Butters will be notified by certified letter. That's what we've had in there. And this is what Sarah's put together for us, that we, it would streamline that. So revised language would be new tenant applications, businesses moving into a multi-use building that has received previous site plan approval and previous multi-tenant approval for the same type of permitted use may be allowed with planning board approval without further formal site plan review or public hearing before the planning board. The public hearing is deemed necessary in such a case, notice will be given pursuant to RSA 67641B. That covers it.
So what would be the planning board approval process? How would that, how would it, it would show up? How would we do that?
It would be, it would be a new tenant application on our, you know, on our agenda. Is that what you're talking about?
Yeah, just mechanically, how would we?
It'd be a new tenant application would be the agenda item.
Okay.
And it would just be on the, on the agenda, a regular meeting. And of course, it would say who it was and what they're doing.
So we, we'd have something like what tonight's applicant gave us?
We'd still have, yeah, we'd still have, Sarah would be writing them.
Yeah.
Yeah, something like this. The staff would be making recommendations and talking about it. And we would have an application that they would have presented to us.
And they just wouldn't have to go through the process of certifying all this?
The certified and the public hearing and the notice to the butters and all that type of stuff.
Sensible.
So what kind of fee are we talking? I mean, would there be one or?
There's a separate multi-tenant fee, I think.
The application fees $25, so that would be the only fee.
There wouldn't be any mailing.
Yeah, it would be a mailing through legal ads. So it would be much more affordable for businesses to, to a new space.
Sounds good to me.
Me too. Okay, so we'll keep that and we'll incorporate it into our revised site plan review regulations. We'll get, run, running those through. Fair amount of work to do. I know I've got a bunch of penciled in stuff there. I've been over some of Sarah's reorganizing. And what we're talking about probably a couple of months ago, we reorganized the, the way it is in there. And in fact, it's referred to that new organization in our rules of procedures. So we'll kind of have to do something pretty soon. So it matches. But we're getting, we're getting on it. So let's do that. Let's read them over. Next meeting, we'll have a workshop meeting. Get one email, whatever it is, a workshop meeting and all that stuff. And are you folks waiting for us?
I just, if I can.
Yeah, yeah.
Sarah Pratt, we're the property owners of, for the applicant. And I told her that of course we made, we, we company was at 6:30. I just wanted to weigh in and thank you for addressing the multi-tenant view.
Well, this is, this is multi-ten, is this the, the Route 10?
Yes, we're, we own the plaza.
Oh, and someone we approved, okay.
So I just wanted to thank you for addressing the whole procedure. If the procedure that is currently in place puts a potential hardship not only on operating owners, but also on the tenant that will be moving in, where we. Might have trouble charging a full month's rent. It also puts a hardship on the person, the, the, the tenant moving in. This woman, you know, put in a fair amount of her own buddies into remodeling and, you know, making a really nice inviting store. And if by chance she was coming here for a public hearing, where she's already put that money in and not been approved, it would have been.
Doesn't mean she'll be approved, even if there's no public.
I understand that, I do. But there, but where she is doing, but where she is an established business in town already and she's moving into a plaza where we are, she is doing the same exact business where our tenants are currently doing retail sales. It just, it's, it's appreciative that you're addressing that. It just, it's, it makes it a little bit.
Because that 21 days for the notification, and if you add everything in there, she's paying for a month and a half.
Yeah, it'll make it much quicker for the tenant, yeah.
Right, that's what we want to do is make it quick for the tenant because she's been nervous for, for weeks, you know.
I'm not sure that called for a humorous observation.
Where'd that come from?
I'm not sure.
Somebody hack our system?
I'm not sure that called.
Like Steve.
Someone on Zoom?
Yeah, it's rich.
Are they speaking to the board? Are you speaking to the board, somebody on Zoom? I don't think so. Okay, okay.
So it's just important, you know, for the tenant that we can tell him it's going to be a two week process or 10 days, you know, because.
As opposed to.
Yeah.
Six weeks.
So, so what we just discussed, discussed tonight, that's in our site plan review regulations. That, that's not a zoning issue, meaning it doesn't go through town meeting and voting for the town. It's approved at a regular meeting by the planning board. So when we get, when we finish running through our site plan review regs, which may be a month, maybe three months, whatever, then it will be approved. It doesn't mean that we approved it tonight. Okay, so.
No, I understand. I, I just wanted to appreciate the fact that you are addressing that and, and we see that it is a concern, both, you know, property over there for, for businesses in the.
Okay, yeah, appreciate it. Nice not to be, not to yell at.
Put your name for the record, please.
Sarah Pratt. That's Sarah, the PRTT.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And unless someone has something else, that may wrap it up.
Motion for adjournment.
Oops, sorry, reaching at something. You're quick.
The deed restriction condition that we put on in the airport.
Yeah.
We, my request is that we've got a chance to review that before, either before or after council, but be sure that what we intend is actually there.
Yeah, you know, and it should be after council because council may change it. So.
There, yeah, that'll have to be actually written to the deed for the sale. Because they can't, you know, they, they write deed and then they close the sale.
Right, okay, so that is, then that's, that was one of the conditions that we put on this whole thing.
Yeah, that'd be restricted, it'd be restricted.
I'm concerned if the board wants to review it because it wasn't put on the list for a compliance hearing. And so if you review it and propose changes, I'm not sure the legal avenue for that.
Maybe, maybe the attorney has to do that.
Well, yeah, you put it as a condition that the attorney would review it.
Is that our attorney?
Each of us, it's, it's okay. It's what we intended.
So maybe we can get an opinion from the attorney as far as what it is?
We still should.
Run it by us.
If we meet, can we have a joint meeting with them? One, two, three, four.
Have to be a special meeting. I don't see why we couldn't just.
Get a copy of it.
Yeah, have Sarah send a copy of us and we could send comments into Sarah and she could relay them back to the attorney.
Yeah, deeds are all public, you know, are property. Like I can go pull your deed if I want.
So I think that might be a way to do it right there. Because, yeah, it has to be on there because it was conditioned. But the condition was that the attorney, they were trying to write it and our attorney approve it.
Your deed will be issued at the closing.
So want to do that? Do you want to have Sarah send us a copy of it?
Yeah, if that's the simplest we can do.
And then, you know, we, we have a right to see it and know about it. We may not be able to make any changes to it. The attorney does, but.
Not without, yeah, the attorney would have to take it back to court and have a change.
So we're just in our own mindset. It was exactly what we're going with. Anybody else?
Yeah, one other thing, kind of. Just kind of a sore point with me. Use of trailers, like, like the two that Appet says down here, or warehouse. The town doesn't get any revenue out of that, that I'm aware
of. Not unless they're registered.
Right, and they're supposed to be registered and roadworthy.
I think that's what Code Informant said, Mike Jasmine said at one of our meetings that they have to be roadworthy.
My, my thought process is, is there a way that down the road, we can eliminate that from happening within the town?
It'd have to be through zoning, you know, and voted on by the town. So, yeah, anything like that can be.
Because they become pretty good eyesores. You look down by, I think, Route 10 Auto on that side, he's got some, a couple of trailers in there, their old food line, their trailer, trailers from Winterall, I believe, or something like that. But just to try and clean up the town a little bit from that.
Well, I can speak to those things because when I bought my property up there, because that guy was an old junkyard guy. And right across the street from me, he put two of those trailers. And Mike and I, and, you know, and it's very easy for him to go down and get some plates for it. It's all I gotta do.
And if, yeah, if it's roadworthy and registered, then it's gonna be.
And nobody ever checks the roadwhey business. I don't know who's gonna do it.
I don't know how you would do that, right?
But I know this one wasn't, because when he finally got it out of there, because the property across the street changed hands, the climate, they changed hands. What happened was they came up and they had to start several times to unfreeze the brakes on the trailer. Just digging up the road.
Yeah, that's generally.
Yeah, they rushed right in there. It's, it's a hard process. And Mike worked real hard to get those done. But I got to see if I haven't decided I wanted to sell mine and you come up to look at it and say, well, I want to buy your plate.
Think I'd rather see a trailer filled with a bunch of stuff than all that crap.
My point being is that if it's a business and they're storing stuff in there, they should be required to either have a warehouse for it or it be used somewhere. And rather than in a trailer, if it's in a trailer, then it should be.
I believe he came, wasn't that part of his process of coming here? Because he painted it and he was supposed to screen it.
Are you talking, you're talking about pappices? Can't hear. Is, are you referring to pappices down there?
Yeah.
And he did paint them?
Right.
Right, but that's not the only one. That's happening everywhere, if you don't watch out.
Yeah.
And over on Route 10, what used to be the basket people, Williams Construction, went in there and he's got an old U-Haul truck, or I don't know if it's still there, but it was there for a year anyway. An old U-Haul truck sat right in the same place and you know he was storing stuff in that. And there's also a trailer over on that property that's painted gray that I'm sure is used for storage. People do that. But then Greg complained about it, my husband, he's good at that. And he said, someone that he exhibited or showed Nick's restaurant property to, when they walked out the front door of Nick's, said, what's that across the street? And after that, where he appealed to Mike Jasmine, Williams or somebody put a fence, I guess it wa, I think it was Ken, put a fence up there. But they left a peephole about that big between the building and the fence. So when you go by, you can still see the junk behind the fence.
We have to look harder though.
Well, who gives a damn if you're showing a property and they don't want to buy it because it's got a junk pile across the street. It kind of affects your.
And those junk piles are very, when I did so, court security work up there, I'd see a couple of those cases, especially one from Troy. If something on that property they can show has a value, you can't make a move, according to the judge.
Oh, God. But I think what we're talking about here is, is trailers functioning as buildings, really.
That's right.
They don't, they don't, they have wheels on them, but the wheels don't work.
So how's that any different than getting one of those pods dropped off? The only difference, in my opinion, is the dolly wheels underneath it, you know? Somebody can call up any one of those companies and get one of those pods dropped off right on their front lawn.
Yeah, Brandon, when they have been left there for enough years that they are entwined in poison ivy and other creeping plants.
So doesn't that hide it better?
No.
No?
It looks like the very devil itself. When you drive up Route 12 and you see that pile of junk over there that's been there long enough that trees are growing through it, that's a little sickening. You know, to know, you have people coming to town and they say, oh, here's Swansea. Whoa, okay.
Gateway, gateway to.
Yeah, right, right on, right as people come in. And over on our road where I live, a guy was spoken to about his junk. And he put big green tarps in the trees around his house to hide the junk cars that he had in there, right next to a conservation property in the Yale Forest. And they're still there.
You know, private property too is.
Everybody stay low, you're not.
It's private.
And it's a new.
Yeah.
One of them has to be used as parts for something you're restoring.
Right.
That's part of the.
Yep.
Thing also.
Either that, either that or you're supposed to have a junkyard license. And from my understanding, from Mike Jasmine, there's only one junkyard that's licensed in this town. That's Buffums. Everybody else is not licensed.
What, what about zoning in a residential agricultural zone? Is it okay? Is it okay to have a automotive junkyard?
Yeah, you're growing rust.
No, it's not.
Farming. State regulates the junkyard anyway. But, you know, as far as the trailer go, get back to that. You know, somebody would legitimately have a trailer in the yard, perhaps a flash rail and not storing stuff in it. Are you gonna...
You're allowed one unregistered?
You can do it, but you can't do it because there's something inside that nobody can see.
Well, now they're using those containers.
That's what I was saying.
Not the pods. The pods are different. Those are temporary. When I think of a pod, I think of temporary where those moving companies, set your car down, you load it all up and they take it away. These are, one of my Navy says, one of those big containers. Shipping containers come off.
That's what I was meaning, was one of those.
Yeah, and they're using those now and I don't know that there's any zoning or state regulations against them.
That meets the new regs for the sheds, right?
That might be considered obstruction.
But again, if it's over, was it 600 square, 1,000 square feet, it's supposed to have a billing permit.
But it wouldn't be. It's only 200 square feet.
Everything needs a billing permit.
Well, not sheds.
I didn't give off my chicken shed.
Sheds aren't a 200, right?
Uh-oh.
A 20 by 20 chicken shed.
That would be a fine for you.
Is it registered?
No soup for you.
So your chickens registered to vote?
I go down to the DMV and go... No, but they give good age like yours.
I understand what Richard's saying.
Your donkeys are registered to vote, right?
Yes, but they vote Republican, they don't vote Democrat. Or they won't have a home.
Okay, anything else? Richard, you have anything else?
Just something that...
Yeah, yeah, I can. That'd be a tough, tough balance there. Yeah, because how would you word it? A mobile home trailer that's still on a frame with wheels.
There is zoning for boats.
Right, if somebody's living in it.
Well, there's one person here in town that has one of those little mobile huts. I'm not going to throw them under the bus or anything. I drive by it periodically.
Like a nice fishing shack or...
No, it's a bigger one. It's a job site trailer, like the ones that they use for the contractors and stuff. It's like that size, sitting, sitting right there on the side.
There is zoning regulations on. Johnson and Johnson one over here.